All right, we're right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion. Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Just as far as the discussion part, the transient doc discussion, if we could get some type of an update on the study, the Lake Shore study, since it's somewhat related?
Yep, I'll roll that into that.
Perfect. I will entertain a motion to approve. We'll add that as a related to, is it okay if we do a related topic on the same agenda item, included at the same discussion? Okay. So we'll clarify that discussion point and is your motion for the amended agenda?
Yep, so moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. All right, with that, our next item on the agenda this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. Thank you. And Zach, is it Buzyk?
Buzyk.
Buzyk, if you'd like to join us at the podium, if you'd like to speak in open forum? Okay, we're glad you're here. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? Karen, anyone online?
I have Karen Moorhead online. She's been online at the meetings recently, so I don't know if she wants to speak, but I'll move her over into the meeting. And Karen, if you are interested in talking during open forum, go ahead and unmute yourself.
No, thank you, just listening.
All right. Good to hear you, Karen. With that, we will close open forum and bring council back to discussion, bring meeting back to council discussion. And council, for your consideration tonight is items on the consent agenda, items 6A through 6F. And just to note that there is an updated memo at our dais for 6F, which I believe councils had an opportunity to review. With that, I would ask for any, a motion to approve or any changes on the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda, 6A through F with the changes or whatever, with the amendments.
Very good. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and our consent agenda is approved this evening. All right, moving on to our regular agenda, item 7A, the Lake Center for Youth and Family Services Presentation and Funding Request. Linda Madsen is here as a guest, and Chief Peterson, are you starting us off this evening? Needs no introduction. Linda, we're glad you're here. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members and staff for allowing me to be here this evening. I am Linda Madsen, the Executive Director of Lake Center for Youth and Families, and have been in that position since October of 2018. A little bit of history, and I think most, many of you know the history of Lake Center. It was Jim Trudeau who was the Forest Lake Police Chief, and then later was the Washington County Sheriff, who had the idea and talked with local community members about this, his thinking was that sometimes youth get into trouble, and we shouldn't ignore that, but also should they end up in the court system? That might be a little bit too much. And so is there a place in the middle for them to talk about what it is that happened? And then to think about, how can I change my behavior? What do I need to do so that doesn't happen again? And so that is how Lake Center started, 1976. And we still have the intervention program today. We have contracts with Washington County and also with Shisago County, and so youth are referred to us through those two counties and also the Forest Lake Police Department. And it is, they are minor offenses, and they, the youth comes in along with parent or guardian, and they have an intake and talk about what it is that happened, and then what's going to happen because of that. So if you smashed 10 mailboxes, you might have to replace those, write a letter of apology, maybe take a class in choice and consequences. But sometimes that leads to other discussions, and parents and guardians saying, but you know, I'm kind of concerned about potential drug use, for example. So it might start there, but then it might end up in another direction that wasn't necessarily expected. The youth have certain, a certain amount of time to finish the plan that's agreed upon by them and their parents or guardians, and then that information is sent back to either Washington or Shisago County. And as I said, that has been, that has been around since 1976. And in the information that is in your packet, you will see that there were 77 youth from Forest Lake that were part of the intervention program in 2022. In Richmond, and I should also say, intervention, we also have a grant that we've received from the state. And we've taken the intervention thinking and put it back a step or forward a step, depending on how you want to look at it, into prevention. So we have a full-time staff member at Linwood Elementary, which is in the Forest Lake School System. And she is there working with youth, but then also working with staff, and looking at things that are happening and trying to stop issues really before they start. So think back to your elementary days, or if you've been in an elementary school lately, it's the lunchroom, it's the playground, it's getting on the bus and off the bus, et cetera. And then in certain classrooms as well. So it really is the work of our staff member who is not trained as an educator, but to look at the things that are there and then work with the staff and where she's needed most. And so it's a very successful program, and we certainly have other elementaries that would love to have that program as well. In Richmond, we have a grant for that as well, and we do after-school programming in four elementary schools in Shisago County. And so the grant is specific to Shisago County, and then we have a summer program that's in North Branch. And we also have safety camp, which has been around for a long time, and Chief Peterson and I were just talking about that. And that has been a very successful program for many years, and it is already full for the summer, which will happen in June. And then counseling is our third area, and that is the, I would say, the newest area that has been added. When I started in 2018, we had 1.5 therapists that were there. So these are therapists that can, we bill insurance. And right now, we have six therapists. We do counseling in school. We have an inter-agency agreement with the Forest Lake Area Schools. So the therapists come in, the youth come from their classroom, there's a 50-minute counseling session, and then they go back to their classroom. The whole idea there is that it is convenient for children, but it's also convenient for their parents as well, and they're more likely than to get counseling if it's available in that way. We also do counseling in office, in our office, and also via telehealth. Our youngest clients are three, and our oldest clients are in their 70s and 80s. We do individual, couples, family, and group therapy. And there were 72 Forest Lake residents that took advantage of the counseling program. We have, we have a waitlist, as does almost every mental health agency. And right now, we have between 45 and 50 people that are on the waitlist, trying to get in to see a therapist, and that is not uncommon. In the annual report that you have in your packet, you'll see our Board of Directors. And I have worked with many boards and have been on many boards, and we have a very supportive and active Board of Directors. Chief Peterson is the Chair of our Board and has been on the Board for 11 years. And so we have great leadership on the Board and very active, as I said, Board members that really have worked hard to increase the services we provide, and also to make it through COVID, to be perfectly honest, which was not, was not easy. Our revenue sources, as you can see, are program fees, which include insurance, grants, special events, and I will remind you that the Taste Event is April 20th at the Scandia Creamery, so hoping you can join us for that. Donations from individuals and businesses, municipalities and counties, and then we also have charitable gaming at Running Aces. We're looking to definitely increase our revenue, and we need to. You know, and some may say, well, why is that? I mean, some are, some things are obvious, but why is it that we need to do that? You know, we've had an increase in salaries and benefits. You know, we face that competition just like everyone else. The instability of grants. Grants took a lot of different twists and turns during COVID. And so since January, there are two of us that write most of the grants, and we've written $440,000 worth of grants, and we will hear hopefully in June and July, and then we'll continue to write. But there's always a big push right at the beginning of the year. Whenever we increase staff, we also increase costs. So right now, if we could hire another counselor, we'd have to look at that very, very carefully because we would need more revenue to do that. And the, one of the other pieces is we don't turn clients away if they don't have the ability to pay the full amount for counseling or for any intervention services too, which are far less than counseling. And, you know, people that start with us, for example, maybe in September of a year, they've already met their deductible. And then January comes around, and then that deductible starts over again if they have the same plan. And for some people, that's a shock, and, and they look at their budget and they can't afford that. And we have taken the stand that if someone is feeling that they need to be in counseling, that should not be a barrier to them, but it also is something that we have to look at with regard to our, our revenue as well. So I certainly want to thank you for your past support. You have two contracts that I have sent for 2023 and 2024. This is the first year that we have sent for the next year, as you were talking about your budget. So, and there isn't an amount written in there. It seems like every municipality just has a little bit different way of how they want to handle that, so I don't want to be presumptive at all, so that is left blank. But we are asking that you make that consideration for 2024. It probably could be set. I, you know, I don't know what the flexibility is for 2023, but for 2024, I know you're talking about your budget or soon to be talking about it. And so would ask you to, to consider an increase if that works into plans. And again, just want to thank you for your support for many years and the support that you've given us. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Linda this evening? I have some staff questions related to contracting, but any program-related questions for Linda? All right. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you.
So, so the request tonight is to approve, do we have a staff recommendation and staff reminder on what was in budget for, what was in budget for 2023? And I guess I could use some clarification on kind of what our cutoff period is of what the contract year covers?
I don't know exactly what the year is, but the, but the 2023 budget is $17,000. It's been that for quite a few years at this point.
And is that what the recommendation is for 2023? Because that was what was budgeted?
I, I don't think we have a recommendation other than what was budgeted. If the council wishes to change that, you have the ability to do that. It's just depending on how much you would like to change that.
Understand. So, and if we were to increase that budget, maybe just refresher on where, where those dollars come from, what that would mean from a, from a budget standpoint?
It depends on how much you want to increase it, obviously. You know, if you would increase it $5,000, $10,000, we could absorb that in somehow in the budget, I'm sure, or find a place to pay for it or use fund balance. If you do more, probably just mostly fund balance, but our fund balance is healthy, so it just depends on what the council's thinking is.
And the, I seem to recall this contract's been at $17,000 for a number of years, right?
At least, at least five years, maybe, maybe more.
I think it's been more than, I think it's been eight or nine years. I'm almost positive since I came on.
I know it's been since I've been on this.
Right. So this has been a topic of conversation for a while, and, you know, I think previous, previous council had expressed a lot of support for the program and kind of just recognized the value that the Lake Center for Youth and Families provides at just an incredibly discounted price. I mean, the value that we get, to me, is just far beyond what we pay for this contract. I'd like to see us move into something long-term that is a more sustainable plan, but I recognize we're maybe not able to do that all in one year. Just from a place to get the conversation going, I'd recommend that council consider like an increase to like $25,000 for 2023, which is our current contract year, and then really to look at what, what should that amount be? Recognize we've got this valuable resource that's running at a loss. They are serving our community. I think we need a plan for sustainability. You know, I noticed that a lot of the revenue is coming from charitable gambling, which, while appreciated, also can be incredibly not the most stable revenue source. And so again, I would, you know, an increase to 25,000, given the number of years and the value seems to make sense. I'd love to see that even higher, but I think we need some budget time to make that happen. And so that would be my recommendation just to get started. Thoughts?
It's a very valuable organization, there's no question about it. It's done a lot for the city of Forest Lake, so. I mean, I would, I would certainly support something like that. And then find out how our budget's going to be looking for 2024. Because I think, I think we're actually getting a return on our dollar here, big time.
I 100% agree with that, right.
You know, it's always a tough deal of how are we going to divvy up money, and, and so. But it's a very valuable organization, and we really appreciate all that's been done, so.
Just a point of reference to answer the earlier question, it's been $17,000 since 2010.
So substantial increase, and I think is, is due. I'd love to go higher than that, but also that, you know, we start to, you know, get to the question of what is the right point. And so I think moving to 25,000 is a healthy increase, and again, allow us for us to get to a point of contracting that allows for maybe something that would either have some, some, I don't know, some automatic increases in or something that would be a trigger for an increase beyond, because clearly, we haven't, you know, we haven't had any increase. And so it'd be nice to have something that was moving up similar to what we do with, you know, we've recently done an increase with the Chamber for the EDA, and go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment that it certainly needs to be part of the conversation for our 2024 budget stuff. So, you know, right now, it's kind of tough to put a long-term thing in there, you know, increases without looking at our budget, which is coming up in September already, right, or July, talking about that, so.
Great. Other thoughts?
I couldn't agree more. And knowing that it's from, it has an increase since 2010 is kind of shocking. And so I think a $25,000, that makes sense. And then also, it would be kind of nice, like what you were mentioning, to see if we could do something to increase it year by year. I don't know what that would look like or how that would work, but I think that would be nice moving forward.
I know a, a direct tie to services provided is challenging because of the nature of the services, but moving into a different contract structure, I think would be helpful. Other thoughts, questions, comments?
I would just echo what everyone's saying here, and, you know, since it has been since 2010, that does seem, that is surprising. The value, we can see it every day. When we get into budget time, I'd like maybe Chief Peterson to speak to maybe how the savings that, you know, what the police department, how they feel and value that savings as to what we would be dealing with if we didn't have someone helping these youth, so.
As a point of reference, I'm just gonna, this is kind of an on-the-spot question, but point of reference, what do we spend on prosecution per month? I have a number in mind, but don't want to shoot you in the hip.
Sorry, I don't have a microphone in front of me there. It's approximately $10,000 to $12,000, it varies.
Yeah, and that's per month, right?
That's per month, yeah. And that, that includes any prosecution costs that the city, any of the police officers or even the State Patrol, if they're working this jurisdiction, that's what the costs are. And I will, City Councilmember Roberts, I will, we can speak a little bit more in detail in regards to it. But I think if you talk to any retired police officer from Forest Lake or any current ones, even ones that have only worked here a few, maybe one or two years, what Lake Center for Youth and Family provides for us is, it's, it's amazing. It really is. To be able to keep these young youth out of the criminal justice system, I've, I have many, many stories. I'm not going to sit here and tell you 30 minutes of them, but just, just these kids that have come forward that I've dealt with, and they've gone through Lake Center, through the diversion program, and they never stepped foot in the criminal justice system. But, you know, they, they could have. If they were put in there, there, it could have been revolving door where they never would have gotten out of there. And I've had so many kids that once they grew up, they have their own kids, have stopped me at Arts in the Park or just out in the street, if they see me at Walmart or wherever it might be, and some ladies come up and say, you remember me? And I'm like, I think so. And they're like, and they tell me a story of how it helped them. And like I said, there are literally hundreds and hundreds of stories. Every time you talk to a police officer about Lake Center or back when it was called Youth Service Bureau, we all have stories like that. So I just wanted to let you know. You just can't put, sometimes you can't put a dollar amount on it either, you know?
Kind of like prosecution prevention insurance or something, that just, like, all of these dollars mean fewer prosecutions, hopefully down the road. So, okay. Thank you, Chief. So with that, I would move that we approve the 2023 contract for an amount of $25,000 with the recommendation that staff evaluate the 2024 contract, looking for another potential adjustment in 2024.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. All right, with that, item 7B, police officer hiring recommendation for Taylor Schwimmelman. And just a quick note, the agenda has Ms. Schwimmelman's name. I am butchering her last name. Chief, you will have to correct me. It is Taylor, not Tyler?
It is Taylor, yes.
It is Taylor. All right. Welcome, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, what I have before you today is a police officer hiring recommendation to fill the last vacancy that we have at the police department. The candidate that I am recommending for you today came highly recommended by our interview panels and personal and work references. Her name is Taylor Schimmelman. Taylor passed her background investigation, a physical exam, and a psychological exam. She is a proud Army National Guard Reserve Military Police Officer and has worked with the Meeker County Sheriff's Office for the past two years as a sheriff's deputy. I recommend the hiring of Taylor Schimmelman for the open position of police officer with the Forest Lake Police Department at a pay grade nine and Step Two pursuant to the 2023-2025 ELS Local 111 Labor Contract.
Chief, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Chief this evening?
Yeah, can I vote for somebody that I can't pronounce the name?
You can try. For sure. Just a quick question, Chief, this is, is this our last remaining open position at the, actually in the department? Is that?
That is correct.
Do I, and we should all knock on some wood, right?
Yep, pursuant to the approved budget of 2023. So yeah, this is our last vacancy, and we have not been in this position, I don't think, for seven or eight years.
Fabulous. It would be nice to be first up. And maybe this was in your memo and I missed it, anticipated start date?
I believe it's in there. Right now, it's looking like beginning of May. We don't know an exact start date at this point.
Very good. Counsel, any other questions? All right, ready for a motion if anyone's ready?
Also move the, approve the hiring of Taylor Schimmelman to fill the open position of police officer at pay grade nine and Step Two pursuant to the 2023-25 ELS Local 111 Labor Contract.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening, 2023 Local Street Project Expansion Request. Davey found some potholes.
Many of them. Many of them, yeah. So as you're aware, the, the road construction project this year came in approximately $100,000 under the approved budget. So as Ryan had said, that we would go back and, and look and see if we could find any additional work as we can bid up to 25% of the project without rebidding it. As you can kind of read in my memo and seeing the pictures, Greenway Road just completely fell apart over the wintertime. Just by driving it and man-hours and estimated tonnage, we'll probably put about $10,000 into that road just this year, which will just get plowed off and end up in the shoulder, and then rinse and repeat again in '24 and '25. So we had Bolton and Mike do an estimate, and it came to approximately $136,000 to do that stretch of road from the Wyoming City Line all the way up to Highway 8. So it's right around $36,000 that I would be asking for over the approved budget amount to add that onto the project. We do get a little discount because they are close. They're right off of North Shore Trail up on 229th and Hennah doing that work, so mobilization won't be as expensive because they're, they have all their equipment on that side of town, so. Really, this is what's so difficult when Ryan and I put together five-year plans because this road wasn't even on the five-year plan. But through a freeze thaw, that became all of a sudden almost the worst road we had in the city, and that wasn't even on our radar. So that's what's so difficult with trying to plan out these projects is you have a really good plan, and then, you know, a whole development or a road like this can just completely fall apart. So we try our best to guess what ones are going to go first, but sometimes this happens. Luckily that we were under budget, and it's not too much additional. And Kevin in Finance said that we have that in fund balance, that it won't affect our fund balance, or we just take from the reserve, so. I guess what I'm asking for tonight is approval to add on Greenway Road to the local street project. I don't have a, an exact dollar amount. It might be plus or minus $1,000, but nothing major. I just didn't want to give an exact amount and then have to come back and ask for another 52 cents or something like that. So that's all I'm asking for tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be sure happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. Counsel, questions, follow-up? Are we doing full street conversations next workshop?
At the workshop, we will be giving you a picture of all the streets and what it's going to cost.
Excellent.
And we will make a recommendation for how we can afford to do that.
This is a little off-topic, but is it updated for current conditions? Have you been able to kind of hear what you found here on Greenway? Have you been able to get out and do some assessments on what might have really not weathered well?
Yeah, a lot of them are kind of following into what we had planned, that they're kind of all falling apart at the rate we expect, but this one is that one-off, you know, so. A good example is the Southview Neighborhood. That wasn't on the radar, and now that's moved up to next year's local project because that whole development just, the seal code's peeling off and the roads is falling apart. So that's the tricky part, is you can have a good plan, but something changes, so.
What was the last one that you mentioned, the one that just moved up?
Southview Neighborhood, right behind the high school on the west side of Goodview, Georgia, and Glenbrook Court, and all of them over there.
And just a small preview, when we give this to you, we're not going to name streets. We're going to name dollar amounts because like Dave says, depending on the year, what streets, they'll, they'll have to change. It's going to be when it gets local and road improvement. We know some streets are going to have to be done. But to rate them and give you today or next week, the streets we're going to do in the next going to do in the next five years, that doesn't make any sense. We really just need an amount, and then, as each winter ends, reevaluate what streets are going to need to be done.
Understand. And I appreciate that approach, actually, of it's a dollar conversation, not street by street, so.
I don't think, in my lifetime, I've never seen so many freeze-thaw cycles in one year. This is, you know, years ago, it would freeze, and in March, it'd get nice, and you'd have a month, and.
Two inches of rain in January, you know, and then that all freezes, and.
And the freeze-thaw cycle is really the key to the whole thing.
Challenging, for sure. Well, bringing conversation back to the proposed spend for, or the addition of Greenway Road, any questions for Dave, concerns?
I know I've been getting phone calls about Greenway, so, you know, it's a big deal, and needs to be fixed, so, I don't know where we have much of a choice, really.
And.
I'd sure like to hear anybody else's opinion on it.
I think it's a nice add-on segment, gets a fair amount of traffic, there's room in project budget, it's a nice piece to be able to knock off, so it'd be good to get it done from my perspective.
Just a question, Dave, so this is across the other side of Highway 8, what about the small, I think it's Greenway Lane or something, or from North Shore to the county line?
So, the city, Forest, City of Forest Lake, their, our road ends at Granada, and then Wyoming has it from Granada to Highway 8. We've asked them many years when they're putting that on their CIP to get that done, and a lot of times you get it's probably going to be next year, and then when you ask them the following year, then it's the year after that. So, when people call in that section, it's typically the Wyoming section, ours has been seal-coated a couple of years ago, so that one's in pretty good shape. Highway 8 project will go a little distance each way, that's section two, so it's hard for them to want to plan for something.
Sure.
And that's just the same, it doesn't go all the way up to Super America, it stops right at our city line rate by that storage header where the creek crosses, right there, so that's where our city limits end, so that's where we start.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, it sounds like we're ready for a motion, if anyone's ready?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 Local Street Project Expansion Request.
I'll second.
If a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? And motion carries. All right, next item this evening, item 7D, which is Resolution 410-2301, Northern State's Power Company or Excel Energy and a Modification of an Easement with Bixby and Schilling Park. Abby, I think you're walking us through this?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Bay, and members of the council. Northern State's Power Company, commonly known as Excel Energy, has a transmission line that runs through Bixby and Schilling Parks. The presence of the public ditch in this area, however, has compromised the integrity of the electrical company's facilities. They'd like to reroute those poles outside of the areas where there's likely to be further damage. So, included in your packet was a site location map that showed that easement line, how they wanted to reroute those poles. If the council approves this modification easement, it would reroute the facilities and keep them in Bixby Park in perpetuity. So, staff recommends the council move to approve the enclosed Resolution 4-10-23-01, accepting the modification easement with Northern State's Power Company for the realignment of Northern State Power Company's transmission line through the city-owned land.
Questions for Abby? Seems pretty straightforward from my perspective. Any concerns? All right. Not hearing any discussion, I would move that council approve Resolution 410-2301, a resolution accepting the modification of easement with Northern State's Power Company for realignment of Northern State's Power Company's transmission line through city-owned land. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? And motion carries. All right, that ends our action agenda for this evening. We're going to move into a workshop session through a discussion section. Anything that's talked in this, or discussed in this workshop session will, that requires official action, will come to council at a future meeting for official action. This is just a working session, and an opportunity for council and staff to collaborate on the topic. Agenda's been modified just slightly from the, started as the downtown transient boat dock discussion, we, there's been a request that's been accommodated for some additional detail related to the lake shore study, and Dan, it looks like you're ready to go.
I am. Mayor, members of council, before you tonight is the Lakeside Memorial Park Transient Dock Expansion. Before I get into it, I just want to give a little context for this project. There are currently approximately 12 spaces available for transient boats in downtown Forest Lake. This was identified, the expansion of the transient boat slips in downtown, as part of our downtown plan. Part of that reasoning was wanting to try to encourage lake users to come into downtown, park their boats, go out for dinner, shop, attend activities, et cetera, and then go back to their boat and go back to their home, so trying to basically create a parking lot for boats, to allow increased access to downtown from lake users. To help with that expansion efforts, the EDA did approve a shoreline study, that was approved in February. I do, I did change my presentation, so I have an update on the next slide as to where the rest of that study is at this point. I also want to mention, as part of this project, the Forest Lake Lake Association has generously committed $15,000 towards the purchase of the dock, so I want to appreciate and acknowledge their partnership in this effort as well. So, they've committed $15,000 towards the ultimate purchase of whatever option we end up going with here for a transient dock. On the shoreline launch study update, as I mentioned in that previous slide, this was approved in mid-February, probably February 15th. Staff reached out and let Bruce know from Talali that they were approved, so he began to work on it. The priority has been working on the transient dock configuration and location, knowing that we're trying to get something in for '23, so that has been the priority of the study thus far. But as part of that, we have also talked about boat launch relocation, so staff here in the city has reached out to DNR, basically wanting to kind of get a go/no-go. So, is it a possibility that we look at moving that boat launch, or is it a hard no? Because if it's a hard no, we'll let Bruce that we're not doing the boat launch relocation portion of it. If it's a possibly, we'll look at, explore other options. During our first meeting with the DNR, the first question they asked when we talked about possible relocation was, well, what site are you looking at? So, again, it's kind of a cart-horse issue. We do have additional contact, a different contact for, I think it was Lakes and Trails, or the main contact for boat accesses within the DNR.
Parks and Trails.
Parks and Trails. We've reached out to them to kind of say, is this a go/no-go, so we can kind of guide Bruce as to where we go with there. As soon as we hear back, we'll launch that next phase of the study. Shoreline restoration, incorporation of non-motorized boating activities, all those activities will commence when we get, once we get the dock and launch figured out. The sort of priority thus far has been, let's get the transient boat dock figured out, let's get the launch figured out, and then the rest of that stuff will follow suit once we get these two priorities identified. So, that's a brief update as to where we are with the overall project scope. So, we're still relatively early on, but again, we're really focusing on this transient boat. I do want to mention, kind of going back to the transient boat situation, that in initial conversations with the planner, what we're proposing here really is a temporary solution. The long-term plan would be to combine the transient boat slips with whatever your boat club docking looks like in the future. But to combine those two, we are looking at having to do an EAW as a result of that, and not wanting to hold this project up. We were like, let's do a temporary one, but looking at that long-term goal of combining the two is definitely where we want to go from a long-term planning perspective. So, we're making sure that whatever dock sections are purchased as a part of this, are able to be reconfigured to fit into that long-term solution. And I also want to mention that both options presented tonight also use the existing dock sections, we're not foregoing what's already there, we're going to add on to what's there, get all that configured, so it does fit into the long-term solution. And I just want to illustrate why this is, we're looking at combining the two docks. What you see here is an aerial view of the actual Lakeside Memorial Park, taken in the summer when everything's installed, and what you see, oh, there's my cursor, is here's the beach, here's the existing Forest Lake transient dock, here's the your boat club marina, here are the two DNR docks, and then you have up to the north here, the docks, the townhomes on the north side of Lakeside Memorial Park. So, what you're seeing is, if we expand the dock slips here, there's a lot of dock space that's being, from a viewshed standpoint, that's being taken up. So, it makes more sense to combine these into one facility, kind of combine all the docks into one, that's the ultimate goal, but all of us are realizing that we need to do something this year, that's where we're coming forward with this temporary solution. So, this kind of helps us to illustrate why we're looking at combining facilities into one, but also acknowledging that that combining would require us to go through the EAW process, which is going to take a little bit of time, but just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, that long-term combining efforts is what's going to be recommended as a part of this. So, tonight, we have two options for dock layouts. The first option, we'll add, we'll bring the total slip count up to 24 to 27. That's really going to be dependent upon water level. Estimated cost for this option is approximately $50,000, that can go up or down depending upon what the actual bids come in at, but that's what we're kind of looking at from an initial standpoint. And on your screen here, you have a draft layout of what that option one looks like. This is what I would call a traditional marina setting, this is typically what you'd see in transient boat slips. Boats come in off the lake, pull into the transient boat slip, tie off. When they're done, when their visit is over, they go back to the dock, they back their boat out, point it back to the lake, and drive straight out back into the lake. So, it's, again, a familiar docking experience to most users, they come in, this is what you would see in probably most of the marinas that I've been involved in, or have worked in across the state of Minnesota. This also maintains a minimum of 100 feet distance between the dock and the beach area, so it keeps that boating activity a little bit to the north of the beach area, and I believe has a 50-plus-foot travel away between the your boat club dock and the proposed expansion for this option. Option number two brings the total slips up to 20, between 22 and 24. The overall width of this one is 60 feet with an inside width of 48 feet, and this one has an estimated cost of approximately $25,000. And what you see with this option is, it's basically taking that existing dock from shore and splitting it into sort of a Y-shaped, and then your, the boats, as they come in, would just tie off to these, the dock posts that are there, and kind of post, or park front, you know, fore to aft, or bow to, you know, tail, so the motors, they'd line up kind of in that function, and then to get out, you'd have to go to the middle and then back your way out, because there really isn't going to be enough room to turn a pontoon around in here. So, when you look at that inside width, that 48 feet, I did some rough calculations, average width of a pontoon is about eight and a half, nine feet, they can go all the way up to 10 to 12 if you get the bigger ones. So, you subtract out the two pontoon widths, if you have a full night, so you have a pontoon here, a pontoon here, and then you have the actual pontoon you're backing out, you're left with approximately 10 or 11 feet on either side of the pontoon, to which to navigate straight out. And to put 10 feet in the context, 10 feet is approximately from about here to the end of the dais. So, that's how much room you'd have on either side of your boat with which to have to back all the way out. I honestly think on a bluebird day with the calm conditions, that's pretty attainable. However, when you get into high wind conditions, you get a lot of wave activity, you get blown around in there, that 10 feet's going to be, I think, a little tight in terms of getting pontoons out. I speak from, in a former life, I did actually do aquatic invasion species treatments in marinas with a 20-foot boat, and when we would back out, because sometimes we'd have to nose in and then back out, when the space was tight, the guy in the front had to push off of the boats in front, because even though we had width, a wave comes in, or wind comes in and blows that nose around, and next thing you know, you're pretty close to a boat. Just want to counsel to be aware of that, because of the fact that if you do, or one of the first ones, then you're parking in there, the user experience might be tougher to get that boat out. It's also going to be a little bit more foreign, having to back a pontoon out, especially if it's steering wheel-driven and not tiller-driven, but just want to counsel to be aware that that option potentially has a little bit less familiarity for a user standpoint.
On this configuration, is the expectation that there's boat parking on, there's four rows of boat parking, so on both sides of both docks?
Correct, which is different than what we currently have, because right now, when you park in, you'd be able to push off and then turn your boat around, because you're not hitting anything. The outside users would be able to push off and turn around and go out, it's the inside users, I think potentially have, it'd be challenging, and again, on a calm day, I think most boat operators could get out, it's just when those conditions are suboptimal, windy conditions, wavy conditions, you're going to potentially run into problems, just getting out of that middle section. And that was one of the first things that I showed this to Bruce, he commented on, was the user experience might be potentially difficult with this configuration.
The difference, and can, do you mind going back to the comparison slide? So, the difference in cost is $25,000 in cost, and it's about the same boat capacity?
This one actually doubles it, so currently, we have slips for approximately 12. This brings it up to 24, so we are adding 12 more pontoons, so both of them add docks, additional slips.
And both of them add about the same, it's just configuration and cost?
Correct, well, this one adds, the first option, this option adds up to 27, if you have, if the lake level stays high, so this one actually adds potentially three more.
Okay.
This one, if you had smaller boats in there, say if you had 12-foot fishing boats, you could get more, it's going to vary on boat length, because if you have the longer pontoons coming in, then you're going to get less in here, but looking at the math on this one, yeah, you would be able to double from 12 to 24 pretty comfortably on this one, with the caveat that they're trying to get out of the middle potentially is a challenge for, if you're in windy conditions. The next steps for this project, really tonight, the intent of tonight is to really identify the preferred design option for the dock, what does council prefer? We look at for adding those additional spaces to downtown. Once that's determined, staff will go out and collect bids for purchase, since this is a city purchase, we'd have to collect competitive bids to make sure that we have, you know, are getting a fair price for the dock. And then we also have to identify where the city funds, where the city contribution comes from, and then as part of this, we'd want the DNR just to at least acknowledge and sign off on the design. The initial meeting that we had with DNR, they seemed to be agreement that there wasn't going to be any additional permitting required for this, but we wanted to give them the final, here's our design, here's the location, and get at least acknowledgement and writing that they're okay with this new proposed dock. Assuming all that can get done in the next two weeks, the timeline would be bringing this back in April for approval. Based on that, in current, I had a couple of conversations with a dock company, they said they were looking at approximately a three-to-four week lead time right now, which would allow installation to happen in June. And based on our winter so far, we could still have ice on at that time, hoping not, but this would be, you know, theoretically installed for the '23 boating season, based on the schedule that you see here tonight. With that, I'd be looking for council feedback on the layout options, as well here to answer any questions on the options that are presented.
Just, devil's always in the details on these, are there thoughts as to funding for the city portion, where that comes from? Is that, is this park fund, or is this a general fund?
So, I would recommend the general fund, as the council know, well, maybe, the city has a 50% fund balance policy in the general fund, and we've had discussions in the past what to do with any overage of that fund balance. Right now, we're at 59%. So, often when governments have that kind of, they start to look at, and the policy says that it should be for capital improvements, anything over the 50%, because it's really a one-time revenue, and you want a one-time expenditure. So, I would recommend, again, using fund balance in this case, and recommend that the alternatives, alternative design is what we should be going with.
The alternative, meaning the?
Not the two straight ones, the ones that.
More expensive one?
Yeah.
Counsel, open to feedback, thoughts, questions?
I'm just curious about the history of dock, city-owned dock space down there, have we ever done this finger design before, is there a background on that?
I don't know, funny, do we know?
Dave, can you speak?
From my memory, that they, the first dock down there was donated by, I think, Halberg Marina, and it had, there was angled parking, and it took a couple of years before they got all ripped off by boats, and then we just ended up putting a straight dock out. Wind waves and Coors Light make for rough, rough boating.
Put that on a T-shirt.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you're correct in that, and they were angled a little differently, this would be more of a straight in, so I think that might be a little easier to navigate than that angled, because they were, within a couple of years, they just weren't put out anymore, because they were damaged, so.
Yeah, I think if you have to get 90 degrees, you're going to slow down, I think the angled ones, people just come flying in there, coming hot, and whoops.
I can see the problem with boats end to end, too.
I'm nervous about the configuration with the parallel parking. People are challenged today because of the shallow water, and just where boats are parked, so, Dan, do you mind pulling that? Do you mind, so, my concern is somebody goes all the way in, and then you've got somebody way in, and then you've got somebody else who kind of parks closer to the, the back, and then someone who's trying to, you know, get spots in the middle and trying to navigate that with waves and, if, in, in my opinion, so first, first of all, acknowledge the Lake Association has been incredibly generous in their donation and so, and appreciate that donation. We have under-invested in the park for quite some time, and I'd rather us spend a little more money and get it right and have a solution that works and is easy to use and friendly. And if, to me, you know, we have a lot of high-dollar projects. This is not a high-dollar project, and so I'd rather us do it right, even if it is a temporary-ish project, which in city budget time might, this project may have a five-to-10 year life, even though we say it's not the long-term solution, we probably will have it for many seasons. And it's dock space that's reusable, I'd rather us spend more money and have just a great marina experience than try to save some dollars and...
This, this could really help the downtown businesses, too.
Huh?
This is definitely going to help the downtown businesses, you know?
It helps, it helps, right. I think either option is in a nice addition. I would rather us just have the right option.
Yeah, this one here, the parallel parking, I think, is the, the ingredients there would be for a fistfight.
Could be challenging, yes. But just perspective, that's...
As a person who doesn't live on the lake, I am more inclined to go with the option number one, simply because if it's, yeah, just, just what you said, Mara, I'd rather put more money into something that we're going to reuse it, and it'd be more of a better user experience and people are more comfortable with that. To me, again, as a person who doesn't have a boat, that only makes sense to me.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So is there confidence that there's room for this configuration and the boat club?
Currently, yeah, because right now, this actually, I believe, from Bruce, is actually scaled out, so there actually is, I mean, there's 50-plus feet between the punt from this one and the existing your boat club activities. So when you come in, you know, 50 feet, but you're coming in, you're nosing, and you're not having to back up, so it's, and that's pretty standard when you go out and do, you know, neighboring docks, I mean, that's not, that's going to be a familiar feel. I, I, again, I think if you go to the other, the Y-dock, that, that backing out is going to be pretty challenging. And this one, I think, even backing on that 50 feet between the two docks, you're only doing it temporarily before you can nose out and drive in a more familiar fashion from a pontoon perspective.
So you mentioned getting other bids. The current dock, I believe, is manufactured by Flow, so I don't know if we would have to use the same or to be a transition piece that would go into a different style of dock. It'd be nice if it was all uniform and the same, but...
I'd make sure that they're...
It's challenging to get other bids from just one manufacturer.
Yeah, they'd be uniform. Yeah, no, to that point, I want to make sure they're uniform because of that exact thing. You don't necessarily want to mix up and get different manufacturers. It's just making sure that the price you're getting from the retailer is a competitive price from the retailer's standpoint, but if you bid out for the same dock manufacturer, same section, so again, we're trying to make sure everything marries up well. We're not trying to do sort of this piecemeal approach to our dock.
Was the op, was the op, was the second option presented as, from a cost savings perspective, is that where that, I'm trying to understand the, kind of the genesis of the two different proposals?
No, the second option was the original option from the Lake Association.
Ah, okay.
And I would add that it was a cost save. I think, you know, the ask, knowing what to ask, what they were willing to give and not wanting to...
Of course, of course.
...overstep their bounds on the city's...
Of course.
...request.
I guess I'd be interested in, you know, Jerry's here, I'm not sure if you're interested in speaking tonight. I'd be interested, is there Lake Association opposition with the city doing some additional funding and going with option A? I, I, I appreciate the effort in putting together the plan and the proposal. I don't want us, this to be us ripping the rug from underneath those projects.
No, I, I can't say don't spend money. I mean, spend some money as you want for the docks, that's, that's great. We were just trying to be conscientious of potential budget, and we actually looked at three different options, you know, something that we felt was reasonable for, I guess, the first expansion to this. And so the, the H configuration that we recommended was, from a cost standpoint, the most effective as far as the number of boats that could tie up.
Of course.
Okay? Plus, the other thing that intrigued us was that you had two platforms for people to fish at, at the end. So you're actually increasing, you know, other public people who aren't actually boaters to be able to be out in the end of the dock, which, there's always people out at the end of the dock right now. So now you have two places where people can do stuff out the end of the dock. So that was the other thing that kind of thought of interest to us. The, so from a standpoint of the finger configuration versus this H configuration, I, I don't think we have an opinion one way or the other. My only concern on the, on the finger configuration is those pontoons backing out next to your boat club, there's 50 feet between the docks there. And so when that pontoon backs out, he has to completely back out past the end of the finger and then try to turn and come out. So there is, 50 feet sounds like a lot, you know, it's, it's going to be tight in there, you know, and we'll have to see how your boat club feels about boats being right by them there, too, of course. But I would also say the modular part of this, you know, for future expansion, you almost have to stay with the same, same dock system.
Understood.
Otherwise, it becomes a hodgepodge. So from that standpoint, I don't think Lake Association has a preference. We're trying to be a little more cost-effective perhaps for the number of boats, but if the city can find the funding for, you know, for a $50,000 expenditure versus a $25,000 expenditure, it's all modular. You know, we may decide to change the fingered configuration back to an H configuration. You can do that because all these dock sections are 12-foot long.
Correct.
So all this can just be reconfigured, and it won't be a waste of money.
Okay.
So.
Appreciate, appreciate that, and thank you for the donation.
You're welcome.
Very appreciated.
We're just excited to get more boats down to downtown for people coming down to go to restaurants, doing shopping, you know, arts in the park, all those things. It's going to be a very positive effect because we hear about it all the time. There's no, people don't bring their boats down because there's no place to park them.
100%, right. Thank you.
Yeah. Just as far as that number of, that budget of $50,000, Bruce came up with that number, was that a pretty...
No, I reached out and I got like a, an initial quote. I just had to verify, verify that quote with another vendor. So that estimate is, is going to be pretty solid from where it's going to be.
Do you mind flipping back to your questions for counsel? I just want to make sure we've, so also on my mind is, you know, money downtown is going to go quick, and while I've said, while I just said that it's, you know, nice to get it right, I would be interested in seeing ultimately the, the source of those funds, and if it is from surplus, that's great, let's have that conversation. But I, that does also weigh into my kind of idea on where this comes from. I'm maybe a little bit more hesitant to spend more money if that's going to come out of park dedication dollars, just because those funds are incredibly...
Yeah, I would, I would really recommend against that. This is almost, almost a maintenance project versus a development, and it's really not much of a development process, which is what the bind is on, on park dedication funds. It's much safer and easier and actually reasonable to, to do fund balance transfer to the capital fund and spend it out of that way.
Other, other thoughts, opinions?
One other question. So when you, the April 24th, and I thought you said like a three-to-four week lead time? Would that get, so Memorial Day would kind of be better than June, just with everything going on? Is that, I mean, obviously we push it if we could?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, he said, I mean, when I reached out, I mean, so I mean, if this goes like without any hitch in the, in the whole process, I mean, theoretically, we get bids approved on the 24th, the orders on the 25th, you know, the three-week lead time, you're looking at mid-May, then for potential delivery on-site, install after that. So I mean, is Memorial Day a possibility? I think it is a possibility, but it's probably an aggressive possibility. That's why I put June on there, just to build in, with my experience in kind of working on these projects, if you put a very tight timeline in there, any sort of, you know, stumble throws those, those end dates out. So I would say June's safe, but Memorial Day's a possibility.
If, if it did get pushed out, would it be, I don't know with the layout, if you would use the older part first and then do the two sections, or how that would look, but would be a way to at least get out to some extent to accommodate, you know, even fishing opener, that kind of thing, and then add-on when the new sections are available?
I mean, there's options, we can talk to the, to the, I mean, once I get a better idea when the, the materials will be on-site, then we can start working on those exact things, like can we put part of it out, you know, or is it better to get installed? I'm not a dock installer, I have, you know, one little push-in dock, I don't do dock installs on this size, so I'd relay back to, you know, there's an, there are install companies that do this work that will let you know, here's what, here's what we're going to do, don't put this dock in, we'll do it in this section, but we'll bring, I'll have a better update on the 24th as to when it looks like we're going to get it installed at that point.
Any other points of feedback, concerns, design, cost, next steps, all right, timing? Dan, do you have what you need from us?
Yeah, just to confirm, looking at bidding out optionally out number one, which is the finger dock, and then bringing that package back on the 24th is, is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
We'll do that.
I see some nodding heads, yes?
Yep.
Yes, excellent, good. Very good. Thank you, Dan, for that work. And again, thank you, Lake Association, that's got the conversation spread, so love this seed money, very much appreciated. All right, with that, we are at the end of our discussion agenda for this evening.
You had one more item on the amended?
Did we kind of cover?
Well, I guess we kind of...
Oh, you covered it, okay.
Just a couple of points on that, as long as we're talking, Doc. Dan, could you go back to that visual layout from both, both docks together there, aerial? So on the, on the, when we're talking about the DNR, well, it's not the DNR, but their launch, that north dock, on the north side of that, for the last couple of years, it's, it's so shallow, you can't even, even high water, low water, you can't use that north side of that dock. Is there any way to have that somewhat dredged or, or some kind of short-term thing? I know the permitting on dredging's big with the DNR, but that, you're just not able to use that at all. Jerry could probably attest to that. It's, it's just, it's not usable at this point.
We got permitted through the DNR last fall, and we took out 100 yards on that side.
On that side?
Right before freeze-up.
Before freeze-up?
Before freeze-up.
Excellent.
So the docks were out and all that stuff, so nobody was using it, but we're, we're permitted to take up to 100 yards out without getting really in-depth there, so that's what we took out last fall, so it's much deeper than it was last year. Because, yeah, it was, well, the water was low, plus, I mean, the sand was sticking out of the water, so we'll see what it looks like, and we also, and we can do it upcoming years, too, just not exceed that amount.
Great.
So I think we'll just see what it looks like once we put the dock in and now with the water being back to normal level, we'll see what that depth looks like this year.
And then just, one other related, boat launch, the, you know, we've somewhat established that possibly the block that the city has, the water treatment plant and those adjacent properties, as far as a potential relocation for parking on that piece, I have talked to those property owners and they'd be interested in a conversation with the city. So whether that's Bruce or, or staff, they're, they're interested in at least a conversation.
Anything else on that topic? All right, let's move on to staff updates, and Karen, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to give you the lineup for meetings next week. We have several. So we have a workshop scheduled on the 17th, Monday. Then there is a joint EDA council workshop on the 19th. Then the following week will be a special meeting at 6:30. It's the follow-up to the local Board of Appeals meeting that we had tonight. So that will start at 6:30 as a special meeting, and then the council meeting will follow immediately after that. So just a heads up, and I will send out emails to remind you of these dates and times and what's happening at those meetings. That's it.
And Board of Appeals meeting, 6:30 on the 24th, it's in here, right, council chambers?
Correct, and Washington County will come back...
Perfect.
Pardon me, after they've done reconciliation of what they heard tonight and bring any changes that they're, you know, intending to bring.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you, Karen. Dan, any updates?
I do, speaking of next week's workshop, I'm going to have to assign homework to the council and EDA for next week's workshop. Abby and I met with Ellers virtually last week to talk about the format for the workshop, and as a part of the preparation for that, they asked us to email out or submit out a sort of an initial policy, not kind of a questionnaire of yes, no questions, just regarding business subsidy, just asking you to review those questions, take a look at them and answer those questions to the best of your ability, get them back to me, and I will forward them over to Ellers, so that, that's going to help sort of guide that conversation for Wednesday. So I will be sending out an email tomorrow to both council and EDA, assigning homework to everybody, so feel free to take a look at that and then get those responses back to me by the end of this week, so I can get those back to Ellers for incorporation. And as, as I'll say in my email, if you're going through and you see one of the points and then you don't, you don't have a thought on it, you don't, you don't really want to comment on it, it's okay to leave it blank, you don't have to fill everything out. They're just looking for as much feedback to kind of start that conversations for Wednesday. And then I also will send the link out to the TIFF video that I sent out to the EDA last week, just to give everybody that update on sort of the fun, the format of TIFF and sort of the fundamentals of how TIFF functions. I will also be attending next week's real estate awards on April 20th to see if we actually won the Real Estate Journal's award or not. So I was hoping to have an update tonight. They have not sent the update out, apparently, I think, and they're waiting for the award show to announce the winner, but I will be going there next Thursday to find out if we are truly, in fact, the winner of the award, or if I just go down to Bloomington to go to an award show. I've never been to an award show tonight, so I have to go get a tux, I guess. That's all I have.
Thank you for representing, Dan. Abby?
Well, I got the opportunity to help at the Easter egg hunt this weekend. That was really fun. I unfortunately couldn't stay for the hunt. I don't, I think it takes longer to set up the eggs than it does to find the eggs, but I think there was about 150 people, children were pre-registered, so I'm sure it was quite a turnout at the park. Other than that, just we're starting to find our groove in the community development department, the staff of three, starting to get our processes a little bit more streamlined, that's been working really well. No other crazy updates aside from kind of those weekly updates you get. If you have any questions for me, feel free to reach out.
Excellent. Thank you, Abby. Patrick?
Just a few things, no legislative act, action this week, or this past week because of the holiday, so we'll wait for them to get back in session and see where we go with our requests.
Have you had, to that said, have you had any communication about bonding? I think last time we had heard there was no update or not, we weren't knowing where we were.
Yeah, all of the projects that we requested are, have been introduced in the Senate and the House.
Excellent.
But we don't know what the DFL versus the Republicans are going to do with anything at this point, so.
Okay, thank you.
We keep in contact, but it's, it's a big unknown, so it doesn't seem like you can agree on anything as far as bonding bill goes, and the last, last information was the DFL was going to go their own way, so, but who knows? I wish I could tell you more, but I can't. If you recall, a few months back, the council authorized the city to hire somebody to take a look at three buildings, this building, the senior center, and the ambulance building, as part of our capital improvement, try to get tenure planned, just to let you know, that's in process. However, the senior deck on the back of the senior center has been found unfit, so we had to close that, so we'll have to look at replacing that, tearing it down or something. We just don't know, we just found that out actually this morning. We already talked about the meeting on the 19th for the EDA and the council. Also want to give you a heads-up regarding Monday's workshop, that will concentrate solely on the streets and how to pay for that. That's going to be a portion of the tenure plan that we've already talked to the council about, kind of gave you preliminary last fall. This will actually give you some teeth in where we, we're going to make a recommendation of where we should be going with this, and what will be do, hopefully what it will do to the levy and so forth. So we'll have that out to you shortly, and I think that's it.
Can I just follow the question? As far as that workshop on streets, early on, you mentioned just budget-only and not specific...
Correct.
...projects. Is, at what point do you, I mean, you have to assess it by maybe the, the impact on residents and how many, like how busy the street is, and then, then the shape of the street?
Without getting too much into this, we've divided that into certain types of projects. One of those shared projects that we do with the county or the state, so that's a section of it. The second section is major reconstruction. Well, that means digging up the road, totally foundation sewer water, like a North Shore Trail and things like that. And then it's just the local improvements. Again, it's not so much, we do that anyways when we do streets and the impact and things. It's really going to be based on the shape of the street and how bad or good it is. And again, that'll change year to year. We know how much it's going to cost us to catch up and it's just trying to identify every year what that dollar amount's going to be and then bringing it back in the bids and specs. When we do the local road improvements, you'll see which streets there are. Again, we don't want to focus on the streets because those, that's a dynamic that changes month to month, year to year, fall to winter, it just depends. So public works and the engineer take into consideration impact on the residents, but also how that relates to other projects that are going on. For example, Forest Road, you know, with ninety-seven and County Highway, how's that? So they take all that into consideration. So we really want to try to stay away from specifically saying we're going to do this street next year and this street the following year, when that could all be mishmashed and mangled by a winter like we've had this year. So we will try to explain that better when we get to next week with funding amount and how we look, we're going to approach the funding.
Amanda?
Thank you, our council, no updates but available for questions.
Dave?
I just want to update, Compost site, barring a massive rainstorm, Saturday will open Saturday. If that's closed because of heavy rain, it'll be open Sunday. But the plan is Saturday morning to be open four days a week until June, so.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. What days?
Saturday, Sunday, Monday and Wednesday. Up until the first week in June and then it just switches to Saturdays and Wednesdays through the summer.
Dave, hot mix, is that ready and when will you start?
Yep, we've got, started on, I think we got our first load on Friday, last Friday. So we're out today getting, the tricky part is we have to drive all the way to North St. Paul and the line is wrapped around three blocks, so you only can get one load, four ton a day. So it's just a slow process. Once commercial asphalt opens up on manning, then we can really start putting a dent in it. But just trying to get the bigger holes now and all that, so it's a slow process, but we're trying.
Thank you. Ryan?
Our city council, just one update, with the workshop coming up Monday, we'll also have Washington County here to talk about the cooperative agreements for County State Highway thirty-three or Everton Avenue. So if you have any questions prior to that project, just reach out.
Thank you, Ryan. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, no updates from me, but if you have questions, I'm available.
Questions for chief? All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And Kevin?
No updates for finance unless you have questions for myself.
I think we're good. Thank you, Kevin. Let's transition to council updates, we'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, I attended the airport commission meeting last Wednesday. It's good to get to learn a little bit more about that. It does seem though, we've got a lot going on out there and I don't know if a workshop is appropriate, but there's just some, we know some issues that are going on. I just, I think that needs to be talked about at the council level at some point.
Certainly, put that on our future council agenda, workshop agenda. Could you maybe work with Patrick on specific topics and you can slide it? Is there anything pressing before, we've got April workshops covered, but maybe May workshop topic? Or also, we can drop it onto a discussion on the agenda as well?
I attended the Governor's Workforce Development Board meeting two weeks ago and it was the first meeting for the year. There are a lot of new members, which is exciting. Staff gave us a legislative progress update for deed, which looks promising. And our next meeting is in a few months, so.
Excellent. Councilmember Hussey?
Yeah, I also attended the airport commission meeting. I'm not sure exactly what Blake's real thing is about. There was a lot of talk about snow plowing and issues like that that they had there this winter with low-wing airplanes, big banks and no place to put snow on, which is pretty typical. And so, and then the airport commission also, well, first of all, we had an update from the engineers, which we go through our CIP. We are looking at a couple of projects coming up, depending on funding from Mid-Down Aeronautics. And then there was a discussion on the open house that's coming up in August. And last year, we had a little bit of a, a little bit less hands-on discussion with that. And it was my idea or my proposal to get more involved with the airport open house for the August. And that's been going on for, what, three months, when I brought it up, we had to get that back on the agenda. And then Dan went over the airport fund update. We don't have an exact number because our audit isn't done yet, but we're in pretty good shape out there for local funding. And so that's all I have to report. Also, I attended the school board meeting last Thursday evening and got to be an interesting evening, to say the least. There was lots of agenda items and, you know, they go through, you know, the reports and their student achievements and consent agenda. But then they have, I don't remember, there was ten action items there. And right at the beginning of the meeting, two of the members wanted to have one line taken off that agenda, so it'd be removed off the agenda. Well, they lost that vote by three to two and they were missing two members, regular members there. So now they had a five-member team that night. Well, anyways, when they got back down to that item, before they could pull a vote on it, those two members left the room, so then all of a sudden there wasn't a quorum. So, so there was no vote on that item. And I'm not here to, to have any kind of an opinion on this item or anything else, but it, the title was the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six Foresek Area Schools Achievement and Integration Plan. And apparently there was some kind of a deadline on this thing and that was part of the argument. The deadline was like the fifteenth of March, they had to deal with it. It somehow they got it moved to they could have their discussion on it on the sixth. But anyways, it didn't happen. And at that point, that was the end of the meeting because now there was no new business or readings or anything like that. So interesting to say the least. And that's the end of my report, thank you.
Yeah, I too, attended the airport commission meeting on Wednesday night and then I was a part of the exciting spring fling and with Abby being there and there was, after she'd taken off, there was more than one volunteer from the community that noted how appreciative they were that they were city staff, that we were part of that. And so I really appreciate Abby taking the time to come out and be a part of that. That's it today.
Excellent. I also, I don't have an update tonight, so that is the end of our planned agenda. We have some packed workshops coming up. Note, council members, the homework that Dan is giving, I look forward to the discussion on funding that will be coming up for the EDA. And also, quite timely, we're also having a roads conversation at the same time because that is also of giant need, so I look forward to both. That being the end of our planned agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.